All right, we will call this City Council Special Meeting Agenda for April 24, 2023 at 4:00 PM. To order, roll call and certification of quorum. Madam Secretary, I will certify. We do have a quorum present. As myself, Mayor Protim, Carbone, excuse me, Adrian Hernandez, Laney Cade, and Joseph Coza are here, so we do have a quorum. I do know Mr. Owens is upstairs and Mr. Berry sent me a note. He's on his way, so we will announce them when they come in. Moving forward in the agenda, citizens' comments. Did we have anything submitted? Nope. All right, with that, we will move to new business, council input and discussion regarding fiscal year 2024 budget, and council priorities. With that, Mr. Epperson will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Owens is present in the chamber.
Mr. Owens is present. Well, thank you, Mayor, and good afternoon, council. Welcome, everybody, to the early budget input session. The first of many sessions we'll have moving forward, working on our FY24 budget. So, working through today's agenda, I want to first, you know, start off by thanking all of our staff. Everybody's been hard at work on their budgets. They did get all of their budgets turned in, all of their supplemental requests and their personnel request. I believe it was on the 14th?
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth? I wanted them on the 14th. No, we got them all in on the 18th, and so we've got everything in, and so we're working through all that information. So, tonight, we'll start to see some of that information. So, moving through the agenda tonight, we've got, we're going to start off with a municipal budgeting primer, something a little different than we've done in the past. And this is, you know, it's not just for us in the room and those of us who've been through a lot of budgets, but it's for the public as well to kind of set the stage for how we do municipal budgeting. And, you know, so we want to walk through that. It's got a lot of good information of how we put our budgets together. A lot, some of it's general overview information regarding municipal budgeting, not necessarily all about Pearland, but generally how that works in the municipal finance realm. Then we're going to move into the assessed value and the FY23 budget. So, this is just kind of a quick update on the things we've been updating you on monthly about where we are with the tax valuation calculation worksheet and the assessed value. Not a whole lot of new information there, just a couple of updates, but we did want to touch base on that and have it keep it in front of you this month. And then we're going to have a brief discussion on homestead exemption. We've had requests from council to look at increasing the homestead exemption in the future, so we're going to provide some information on that so we can start that discussion as well. Then we'll move into the FY24 budget. So, in the general fund, we're going to review some of the key supplementals. These aren't all the supplementals that were submitted, but it's starting with the key supplementals associated with our strategic priorities, as well as the milestones that came out of that that really had FY24 budget implications. And then we'll also look at some other key supplementals that we need to move towards figuring out how to fund in FY24. And so, in that, when we get to discussing each of those, there's, we need some feedback on several of those, so we'll, as we work through those, kind of stop and touch on those points where we do need feedback so we can see where we move from here as far as developing additional budget numbers for several of those items. And then we'll do a real quick first blush on staffing updates. Really, it's just going to look at the staffing requests by year over the next three years and what came in from the departments on those. No real prioritization or where we're heading on those yet, but we'll work through those and bring those back and talk about those in more detail at upcoming budget meetings. And then we want to look beyond FY24. We've got some very large upcoming costs in some different areas that we want to keep on our horizon and make sure we're preparing for those moving forward. And then that'll close out the general fund. Then we'll move into the enterprise fund. The enterprise fund will be brief and quick because really, there's not a whole lot of additional requests or supplementals associated with the enterprise fund for the next year. It's really just fully funding out the things we've started to implement this year. So, it's the full operating cost associated with the surface water plant as well as the Bailey Plant. So, with that, I'm going to hand it over to Amy Johnson. She's going to cover our municipal budgeting primer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Epperson. Tonight, I wanted to kind of go over just some of the basics of municipal budgeting, not necessarily exactly what Pearland does, but what generally is accepted in budgeting processes across the country. So, you know, you have the two types of budgets. You have your operating budget and your CIP budget. The operating budget is your financial plan that's adopted for the single fiscal year, and it designates kind of all the expenditures that go for the city over the course of that year. It's adopted as modified and approved by the city council. And then the CIP budget is your five-year financial plan, which addresses development and improvements to the city's infrastructure. That one is, has the first year adopted by council, and then the remaining four years serve as a forecast for where you're headed. And there's different types of budgets or different types of budget, what I'm looking for, theories that you can go with when you're trying to do a budget. There's a traditional line item budget, the target-based budget, program-based budgeting, zero-based budgeting, priority-based budgeting, and a hybrid approach, which is what most municipalities use. It kind of blends some of the techniques together. So, traditional or line item budgeting is typically widely used, and it's very like control-oriented. It goes by the fund and function level, so this is where you see maybe your patrol division within your police department or your recreation division within your parks department. So, that's what we go through and we kind of monitor, kind of review all the expenses that each division and department need in order to run their programs for the whole fiscal year. Target budgeting, this is something that we don't do a whole lot. It's where management sets a limit on the budget that the departments can request. We did a little bit of this when we ran into the tax situation in the fall, and we knew we had to cut down to a certain level because it's driven by revenues. So, target budgeting is not something that we typically do, but we did implement this strategy in the fall when we had to make some quick decisions about large expenditures. Program budgeting, these are just like new programs that departments would pitch forward to bring on to the city. For instance, if we never had the nadatorium, you know, maybe they would put together an aquatic program or the drone program within police. So, they put together a program and outline all the costs within that program, and then once that becomes adopted, it becomes part of, it becomes a division within that department. Zero-based budgeting was really popular around like 9/11 when everyone was talking about government. We were trying to control costs. The economy was really struggling, and everyone wanted to justify what we were spending money on. So, they started talking a lot back then about starting at zero and literally justifying every single expenditure that was made. It sounds really good, but it spends a lot of valuable staff time justifying things that we already know we need and we need to go forward with to serve our citizens. Priority-based budgeting, that's something that you guys are very familiar with. This is what we do when we base the budget off of y'all's strategic plan. So, every year, we go forward and we talk with council. We get the idea for what you guys want to do, what are the funding priorities going forward in this year, and then we try to bring forward budgets that align with those priorities. So, we kind of highlighted here the three main ones that we use here in Pearland, which is the traditional line item budgeting, the priority-based budgeting, and the hybrid approach. Then you have different fund types within the budget. You have governmental funds, which are your general fund or your debt fund. You have proprietary and enterprise funds, and those are operations that are financed in a manner that is like a private business. They're supposed to pay for themselves. A good example of this might be the water sewer fund. And then fiduciary funds, that would be funds that come from another source and the city is just kind of the caretaker of those funds. We don't really add to those or take anything away from those. We are just like the holders of those funds. That might be like an employee health trust fund or an OPEB kind of fund. And then, this is a little bit more about governmental fund types. We have the general fund, the operating, which is a governmental fund, the operating fund of the city. It's typically the largest fund, and it receives the most focus from all involved because it's heavily based on property taxes and sales taxes. Special revenue funds would be an example of like the hotel motel fund, a type B PEDC type of thing, or the PEG funds. Those are things that are restricted, and they have a very specific purpose that you can use them for. Debt service, we all know that the debt service funds are restricted to debt-related expenditures. That's selling back our bonds and the money that we've borrowed. And then capital projects funds are restricted to expenditures for construction like land acquisition or capital asset creation. Those are going to be your larger purchases. Within proprietary funds, there's two different categories. There's the enterprise fund and the internal service fund. And so, you have the enterprise funds that resemble a business activity, and I've listed some typical ones here, not necessarily Pearland ones. So, we have electric utilities, water sewer, maybe a golf course, something that you take in the fees that pay for the cost to serve that purpose. And then internal service funds, those are services that you provide to the government from inside the government. So, this is where you pay yourself to run these services. You have your IT fund, a fleet fund, any kind of replacement fund. And you want, you know, you might say, well, that's not really a business, but it is a business because when you have to fund it at a certain level, you have to be able to run that on its own. You would like to not supplement that with general fund dollars, so you want to set it up in such a way that it does cover its own costs. Oh, give me back one second, Josh. I do want to point out here that the funds are presented separately in budget, and they're combined in audit. So, a lot of times, we have residents that don't understand why the budget and the audit don't match each other or why those numbers don't match. I do want to point out that the audit has been grouped in different ways than the budget does for reporting standards. So, these are the restrictions on these funds. We have the general fund, which can fund any kind of activity, even if it's funded by another fund. So, the general fund can supplement another fund. The proprietary and special revenue funds, those are funding activities for which the revenue is brought in. So, that would be debt, capital costs, or administrative costs. And then debt and capital funds can fund any related debt and project costs, but no operating costs. And then fiduciary funds can only fund related activity. Those are very specific. And then I wanted to put up here some expenditure categories. It seems like in recent years, we've gone through the budget, and we'll go through line item by line item, and we'll come to some of these categories, and it's like, well, what is in that category and why do we call it that? These are some standard categories that you see in budgets in all cities. You have your personnel, your services, your supplies, maintenance, utilities, and debt. And there's just a little explanation about what can go in each of those categories, and that's just more to have in your back pocket for when we start talking about the line items later. You'll know what kind of categories those are. And then we also have transfers and capital. So, transfers are movement of resources from one fund to the other. It's like just what it sounds like, a transfer to cover costs. And then capital are items that exceed the capital threshold that's set by each municipality. Ours is $5,000. Typically, large purchases that retain value after one year and are listed on your fixed assets, and it can be a combination of goods that make up that one asset. For example, a road is a combination of services, supplies, time, and other resources, but it makes up that one asset of the road. Do you want to go over this part, Rachel? I'm going to turn this over to Rachel for the update on the value.
Good afternoon. So, there haven't been very many changes since March. We're still pending completion of our ACFER, which is slated for May in order to get accurate ending numbers from fiscal year '22, and that will help us to begin our budget forecast for FY24. Our mid-year budget amendment, which includes projections, will be adopted in June. We're still monitoring our interest and sales tax revenue for potential increases. Through April, our general fund sales tax budget is $452,000 over the amended budget, and through March, general fund has reached 76% of the interest budget for the year. Our assumptions for the FY24 tax rate model remain the same. And our tax rate with the accurate worksheet also remains the same at this time. And so, you can see it visualized in graph format on the next slide. And then I'll turn it back over to Amy to talk about increasing the homestead exemption.
So, the homestead exemption increase, we brought this to council to, because we discussed this briefly last year, and I believe it was past the deadline for us to take any action on. So, we wanted to bring this to you and just talk in general about the homestead exemption pros and cons. So, some of the pros are that obviously, it's beneficial for select recipients, the homeowners, that are living there in that property. There's thought that it may stimulate the housing market by having more of a homestead exemption. You could theoretically be more, it might make it more of an oppression on home buyers and influence them to purchase in your community. And then it may also encourage home improvements because those valuations might be held down a little bit as they go forward to make those improvements, and therefore, it might make them spend a little more money on that. Some of the cons are that it shifts the burdens to businesses and non-homesteaded property owners. So, if you need to bring in $2 million and you're going to give this group a break, you're obviously going to have to come up on this group in order to make that revenue threshold. Now, if you bring the revenues down altogether, that's a different story, obviously. But it will increase the no-new revenue tax rate and the voter approval tax rate in order to make up the difference. It costs what it costs to run the city, right? And so, you have to bring in a certain level of revenues in order to make payroll, in order to serve the citizens, in order to do all those things. So, it will likely increase the no-new revenue and the voter approval tax rate. The current homestead exemption is 2.5% with a $5,000 minimum. It's set by the tax code, and the minimum homestead exemption cannot be increased based on the code. The average homestead exemption amount is approximately $7,425 per home. And the maintenance and operation taxes for 2022 is $37 million. Increasing the homestead exemption based off of the current taxable value information, if you had a 3% homestead exemption, it would increase the exemption amount up from that $7,400 figure to $8,900, decrease the taxable value down by $45 million, and that impacts the budget for $128,000 in O&M and $152,000 for debt service. A 5% exemption would increase the amount to $14,800. It would decrease the taxable value by $180 million, and it would decrease O&M revenue in the budget by half a million dollars and decrease debt service revenue by $600,000.
So, before we jump into talking about FY24, just wanted to pause here and see if there's any questions on anything presented thus far regarding, you know, the budget primer, the FY, I'm sorry, the homestead exemption, or where we are with our FY23 budget and the projections for FY24 at this point?
Thanks for the information on the homestead exemption. Can you talk a little bit about maybe what some of the other unforeseen consequences of moving to a higher percentage would be? So, for instance, if we're lowering the taxable value and then obviously setting a rate on that value, what does that do for like our calculation worksheets and stuff moving forward? Does that have any impact on that?
So, I think what it does with the calculation worksheets is obviously, when you calculate your no-new revenue and your voter approve rate, that is based on taking your assessed, you know, your new assessed value and then calculating that for the same properties, generating the same amount of revenue. So, if those same properties are getting a higher exemption, a higher homestead exemption, then the rate to generate the same amount of dollars must be higher. So, your no-new revenue rate and your voter approval rate and your tax calculation worksheet will come back higher.
All right, thanks. I just want to make sure that was stated clearly. Appreciate that. That's all, Mayor.
Sorry about that. Can we go back? Three or four slides that line up to the FY tax rate model? Before this. Yes, this one, the one that had the different line items. How much in new discretionary spending is this?
So, this model includes $500,000 for supplementals and $500,000 for vehicle replacements. You could also consider the contribution to streets and sidewalks. That is the entire contribution we typically make to streets and sidewalks, so any So any reduction in that is only discretionary insofar as council wills it. The amount to drainage fund was approved in a prior resolution.
So what was that?
So just real quick to kind of clarify, I think the question, what is additional?
Versus the previous?
Additional discretionary funding. So we, I think we had more than $500,000 in supplementals last year. We had more than $500,000 in vehicle replacements last year. So, you know, these aren't incremental over last year. 1.6 for streets and sidewalks, I believe, is the same, so that's not. So I think the one incremental one, or the incremental ones here over last year's budget are going to be your addition to the drainage fund. And then our 3% growth we put in there for inflation as well as the COLA and adopted step plan.
I've heard a lot of words. Can you guys just tell me what is the total of the non-red items?
We can add those up, but those are not additional discretionary funded things.
You know, are they higher than the budget from last year?
These are basically taking last year's budget. I believe we're going in with less supplementals, less vehicles. But we are adding in there 3% growth for inflation on our supply line items as well as including the COLA and the adopted step plan. So I think if we, if the question is, you want to see that compared to last year, we can bring that back the next time we have a budget meeting.
I just wanted the record, I couldn't get really a straightforward answer. It's 10.1 million in non-red items. So it looks, appears to me to be 10.1 million in additional discretionary spending. I haven't heard.
So that's, that's not accurate. So it's not additional discretionary funding because many of these things, like the 1.6 in sidewalks and infrastructure fund, we have that in this year's budget. We're holding it the same. There's no increase.
I would just like it to be clear then, because I just read the minuses and I read the pluses. And the pluses add to 10.1.
So the purpose of this wasn't to compare to last year's budget. These are just the major assumptions behind what we've plugged into the FY '24 tax rate model scenarios. So that we have a starting point for FY '24.
Can we go to the next slide, please? And so what is the total general fund budget, assuming the current projection, I guess the FY with the 5%?
So this is only depicting what they're with the no new revenue tax levy, the ad valorem taxes at that.
Is this a budget, I'm assuming, associated that generates this? It's not just numbers floating?
The purpose of this was look at what we needed to generate in our no new revenue tax levy based on the assumptions on the previous page. And then what the impact on the tax rate would be, looking at our tax rate scenarios based off the corrected worksheet from last year. So we've seen these multiple times every month as we've gone through this, that the purpose of them is for that. It's not to compare the overall general fund expenditures year over year.
So, and just for the public's benefit when they're watching this, from the last meeting that we showed these two slides, I was told that we now have 10 more million dollars in spending and the budget, roughly speaking, is around 120 million. And somehow we're rolling that backward. I guess we're changing, I don't know. I just want to get that on the record. And so I'd like to know that number. It's a rather important number.
So we're not presenting the entirety of the budget at this point. So that number's to be determined.
Agreed. But we're also presenting rates and rates tied to budgets and spending. And I'm getting the rate, but I'm not getting the spending. And I guess I'm a little frustrated with that.
The revenue associated with this rate, this is purposeful because we've been working through the tax rate worksheet issues. It's not for that purpose. And this is only one of the revenues. So we've got to look at all of our revenues when we go to build our entire budget.
Thank you.
Any others? Mr. Cozer?
Yes, in regards to the homestead exemptions and the increases, if we are to increase from 3, 5%, whatever percentages, is there any way we can come up with a offset for percentage, dollar amount, whatever it might be, as far as what that would throw off on businesses? Because I mean, we would be having an impact on small businesses and large businesses within the community going down that path.
Sure. So you're looking for like the, how much we would have to make up?
Yes, and you know, and be able to equate that into, is it a percentage, is it a dollar amount for every percent, every, you know, whatever the metric might be as far as that goes, so that a business could take a look at, you know, hey, we're looking at this type of increase for that.
Sure. So, you know, we have the raw numbers on here based on, if, based off the 22 taxable value information, if we were to have made it a 5% exemption, it decreases the M and O revenue by half a million and the debt service by 610. So that 1.1 million is what we have to make up.
Right, right. I understand that. What I'm saying is, what is the impact of the business? You know, we sit there and say, 3% homestead exemption does this to the budget. The 5% exemption does this to the budget. But we also have businesses that pay taxes.
Right.
What is that implication for businesses?
I think we could run some scenarios for individual businesses and their property taxes. I mean, it would be different based on each of them.
Right, yeah. Each one would have its different impact. But I'm just looking at, you know, for some scenarios that if we were to go down this path, what is the impact?
So I think like we do with our homestead, or usually we do with homestead exemptions, what we could do is take some different sized businesses and run the same type of scenario and get that in front of.
Fair enough.
Ms. Kate?
I'd be interested to see some specific scenarios with businesses as well, if that's possible.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
One other question that I had on the 1.6 million on the sidewalks and streets is that seems to be kind of what we've done every year. If the bond was to pass here in May, would that have any impact to being able to reduce that? Would we continue looking at maintaining that at that rate?
So we're going through an update to our street network condition assessment. So we'll have, in a handful of months, we'll have that updated. And so what, not only will that give us the pavement condition index for each road, it'll also give us basically a target funding level that we need to fund annually to keep our pavement condition index or PCI, you know, at a flat level or if we want to bring it up or down, different funding levels for those. So if I go back to the last time we did the full road network assessment, I think the, this was 2014, and the recommendation is, was that we would be spending about $4.6 million annually on roads alone. Another 1. something on sidewalks. So obviously, we haven't done that. So I'm very curious to see where our PCI comes back this time. And if we've, if we've seen that decrease. And then what that estimate we need to provide each year is. So the 1.6 is much less than what's been recommended to keep us at the same PCI level. My expectation is it'll, that study will come back and say, we need to be probably even higher than that 4.6 annually. So since we haven't been adequately funding that annually, even with the dollars going towards the sidewalks in the bond program, I think we could use every bit of that plus probably two or three times that much on our street network.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Trent, kind of back to your point right there. So you're saying that the index was saying that we needed to fund streets and roads by 4.6 million annually in order to keep up with the current maintenance levels. I'm anxious to see what that looks like on the new report because ideally, we have $32 million, I think 30 million in the current bond that we're proposing on this election. And $4.6 million in, you know, time value of money associated with that. I mean, where can we split the difference on that in funding annually? Because I would prefer to keep as much out of a bond than anything to reduce our overall debt, right? So, I mean, and it kind of goes back to my point about IT. And I know you're going to talk about all that, all the other infrastructure funds and stuff like that. But, you know, as much as we could potentially fund in-house through our M and O or through our service funds is better for me. And it may not be feasible, but I'd really like to go through that exercise at some point to see what it looks like. And maybe predict, and what would we say, seven-year bonds or something like that? Is what our traditional timeline is or something like that? Bonds every seven years, roughly?
Five to do a new bond package.
Yeah, five to seven years, so. I think it'd be worth that exercise. And you probably already have that somewhere.
Sure. So when we get, you know, the, this new assessment back, we'll bring the data to you and take a look at that. And I think what we've got to do is we've, you know, once we understand what that dollar is, we've, you know, we've got to put a plan where we can every year add more to that until we get to a funding level that's sustainable or makes our infrastructure sustainable, the road network. You know, it's, and since we did the first one, it's been very difficult to add dollars to that because there's lots of priorities. I think we just have to, you know, always move that needle up where we can and try to get to that point we need to be at eventually.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess first of all, thank you for doing the general overview upfront. Those terms get thrown out a lot and I think it's good and it's recorded so we can go back and reference that. And in terms of the homestead, I don't know what that kind of representative sample looks like, but figuring out a big, kind of diverse swath from business, personal property up to hoteliers and other industrials that have large taxable value. I think coming up with that that we can use going forward would be helpful. Because I'm nervous, I mean, when we talk about water rates and what we've done kind of structurally to push the burden on to the commercial users. They're taking it on the chin there. They don't have the 10% cap and I think pretty much everybody's appraisal has gone up. So I'm concerned for our small, small to large businesses, how much burden we're putting on them. So being able to quantify that would certainly help.
Sure. I think, I think that's why we wanted to bring this in this format tonight, so we could have this discussion. And I think it's a great idea that we do a good cross-section of our businesses to see what those impacts are.
So a couple of questions. Slide 11, real quick. Kind of an interesting thing, traditional line item budgeting to priority-based to hybrid approach. Amy, when we talk about hybrid approach, you know, most municipalities, it looks like we use some of this. Can you describe how we integrate hybrid into this?
So the hybrid approach really is a combination of all of these different kinds. So the ones that we use primarily are the traditional line item and the priority-based budgeting. When we're proposing new programs, we might use a little bit of the program-based budgeting to flesh all that out. So you guys know the whole cost of the program before you decide whether or not to implement it. And then as, as I briefly touched on, we used a little bit of the target-based budgeting in the fall when we encountered the tax issue.
So, you know, my comment to this slide kind of goes back to some points that we've made in the traditional line item budgeting. And that is, especially in light of the tax calculation issue and the budget that we've had to adjust here midstream. Really, as we put this next budget together, looking at the line items, and I know we have strategic priorities. We've been tweaking our priorities along the way and just making sure every year that we look at those line items and make sure that they're still, you know, is it still relevant? Is it still a priority and is it still relevant to that priority? We may have evolved and changed and morphed. And then secondly, does it even, does it even match up with the priority, you know, that we have? So just making sure that we're internally doing that. We may get and look at a program and say, you know what, it's outused its, you know, useful life of a program. Maybe it needs to terminate and move on to something different. So just, that would be my, just look at that particular one as we go through this budget. All department heads, just really take a look at your budgets and say, is that line item still needed? And is it still meeting its objective and has it morphed and changed? Can we do a little bit better there? So that would be something that we look at. Go to the assumptions page, 27, the one that we've, the red versus the black there. Oh, excuse me. Yeah, that one, I guess 26. And I just, I want for the record to make sure, because it was very clouded here just a few minutes ago, about what this page represents. This page represents, does not necessarily represent our exact budget. What it does represent are assumptions going into the rate model scenario that you see on the, on the page next to this. Okay? And as mentioned, all the line items that are in dark color, black, all of those with the exception of one or so of those, I believe, one of those, the supplemental at the bottom was actually decreased. But everything else is in our budget currently. So it's using the same assumptions of the budget that we have currently and want to make sure that that is carefully discussed and talked about. It is not $10 million of new spending. It's dollars that are in the budget right now.
Mayor, I'm a little, I hear you're going and I appreciate it. So what is that number total right now? Because I'm unclear.
What number total? When you say that general?
You're saying there's 10.1 in here, which is the dark numbers. So what is the total of that bigger number? If it's 10.1, I guess larger than last year?
No. You're trying to go ahead and add on 10.1 to the budget. That's not the case.
What is, what is the budget?
What is our budget? What's our current budget?
No, Trent, what is our current budget?
Our current budget's 106. Did we cut it by four on the, on the general fund? We were at 110 and we cut it by 4.1.
We were right around 110 and we cut it by close to 5, so.
Now we're at 105, so that's the working number right now.
That's the FY '23 budget, yes.
Closer of this.
This, this is looking at assumptions for the FY '24 budget. Some of these are less than what's in the current budget. Some of these, like the 3% growth for non-personnel recurring expenses for inflation and the COLA and adopted step plan, those would be above what was in last year's budget for those type of line items. Supplements here is less than in the '23 budget. The vehicle replacement's less than, less than. The sidewalk and streets is the same. The 125 for the drainage fund is in addition to what was in the '23 budget. The sales tax growth is an assumption, you know, that we'll have an additional 4% growth in sales tax.
I don't mean to belabor, what I, I guess my item is, I knew that we did 110. We've minus some things, which is great. But that was tied to like 63 and a half or 64. And I've got the next slide here that's at 67 or 68.
It was tied to 62.3. That's our current tax rate.
Right. And so I just don't know what is the general fund spending with the next slide tied to the rate that they've produced. And I just don't have like a good idea.
So you're, you're taking my time, so let me finish.
That was my only point I was.
Well, your point was, we're adding $10 million of additional spending and you cast that net upon staff. And I'm trying to clarify for the public who are watching this, that's not the case. And I just want to make sure, because when we start talking budgets, it gets very complicated very quickly.
Sure.
Okay? It gets complicated for each one of us, it gets complicated for our staff, and it gets certainly complicated if you're not dealing with this every single day. So I want to make sure that what our assumptions, and I don't know how you do budgets and forecasting for a particular development. We use assumptions just like this. We assume certain things that happen and that's going to spit out a certain number at the end. That's what they're doing here. So now go to the moving forward, the, it was page 27, I think it is. Okay. So now, based on this, this is, this is making some assumptions on a calculation worksheet. So if you go to the calculation worksheet that we have to do every single year, it doesn't set our budget. It sets no new revenue rate and voter approved rate, given certain valuations of property, period. It doesn't set our budget. All this is doing is taking the tax calculation worksheet and if we have a 5% increase, a 7% increase, and a 10% increase, what are we looking to assume that valuations are going to be, okay? And so that is, all this is doing, it's giving us a measure to see what this adopted forecast tax rate may look like, given these assumptions. And in these assumptions, Trent, if I am correct, the previous page, those assumptions are in here.
Yes, sir. So this is showing, as you said, like for each the 5, 7 and 10% growth scenarios, it's showing the no new revenue growth and the voter approval rate. And then the part in blue would be our forecasted tax rate to support the budget with the assumptions on the prior page, with the rest of the budget basically being held steady.
Yeah, and so until we have an actual budget back with some of this applied and certified numbers, I might add, we need certified numbers. And but but this is giving us a running look, obviously the higher values that come in, assumptions and and what we do with our tax rate. At the end of the day, the tax rate we adopted, once we had a corrected worksheet, is actually a penny below no new revenue. And and so I would I would assume, I would I would make this assumption, maybe a bad assumption, but I would make this assumption. And that is, had our worksheet been correct from day one, I don't know that we would have adopted a tax rate below no new revenue, may have. But my assumption is we would not have. At the very least, we would have adopted a a tax rate at the no new revenue or pay possibly even a penny above. But at least at the no new revenue, and we would have all patted ourselves on the back for adopting the no new revenue rate, all of us. And so rather than voting against it. And so so to that end, I I, you know, this is a good tool and I think it's a good tool that we use each and every day. So to the assumptions and and on, not the assumptions, to the page 32.
Just one other point on that chart there, Mayor. You know, if if we hadn't had the tax valuation correction and had had this unknown thing of whether we're going to have the inaccurate or the accurate worksheet, we wouldn't even be looking at this type of information at this point of the early budget input session. We we wouldn't even be really talking tax rate or voter approval rate or no new revenue at this point of the budget cycle. This is just, you know, it's it's kind of got a singular purpose to to lay out some parameters of where we think things might be, because there's so many unknowns moving forward after we had the the issue with the tax rate calculation.
So on on page 32, real quick, so about the homestead exemption to some of this. When we receive value information, are we, do we receive homestead value? Do we receive commercial business or non-homestead value? Do we have it segmented out when we receive that information?
So, don't quote me. The tax calculation worksheet, you know, has different lines that take all that information into account so that so that all that gets broken down and the exempted properties get taken out. It also deals with the over 65 and the other types of exemptions there are.
So, and I know that we've had assessments of the Southwest kind of working to get some early look. Have they seen anything? Have they been able to get any data yet?
So they actually helped provide this information. So they took the 22 tax rolls and were able to to work through the numbers to tell us, you know, how how these changes to the homestead exemption would 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 result in this information. Their next step is, once we, you know, we've got early tax rolls, is to start helping us take a look at where we are for FY 24.
Okay, yeah, because I I think that is the concern. I mean, I, we're we're all, you know, if we're all homeowners and assuming that we're all homestead exemption, it's it's a good thing. And most of our voters are homestead homeowners, and so that's that's where we are. But we also have a fair amount of business and we have a fair amount of small business. And, you know, whether that ends up in a in a CAM charge or wherever, there's a there's a charge that's going to hit someone. It's going to ultimately get passed on to, you know, us as as patrons of those businesses. So how we do this, and I'm not saying that we should or shouldn't increase. I I'm I'm saying at this point, we need to have all the data necessary to make sure that we make a good informed decision about how we do it. And if we do move in a direction to increase the homestead tax exemption, we need to have that holistic approach so we understand what it does to our businesses. I would also say that if we have a a target in mind of a 10% exemption or 15% exemption, max, I think is 20 currently. And and legislature may change that, but, you know, is is to have a very thoughtful process about how we move the bar from the 2.5%, say to a 5%, to a 6%, to an 8%, to a 10%, whatever the number is. So we do it thoughtfully and it's not a shock value on anyone, especially on the business side. So, in other words, grow into it and and condition ourselves to get there. So that would be my my advice as we move in that direction, that we we do that systematically. We have a stated game plan and a goal as to where we want to go and hopefully, preferably adopted by the council. This is the direction we want to move. Yes, any particular council can change that and not adopt something or move it forward. But at least would show a a caption in time that this council or the next council or whatever council says, this is what we want to do. And move the bar in that direction. So I think that would do it rather than, again, rather than all of a sudden a shock value to the business community. I mean, it'd be great for the homes for the homeowner, but also want to make sure that our businesses continue here and they don't just get up and say, we're gone, we're going somewhere else, to make sure that we 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 keep them and and keep them going. So I think this is good information and the more we can get on the Mayor Pro Tim's point about how we know that, better this this process is going to be. Remember Cam Car?
Just very briefly, I think Member Hernandez brought this. I think a stair step is very reasonable. I don't think you can go from 2.5 to 20, as much as I would love to do that, considering where we are. But I would like to see for the staff's benefit, maybe what is a 5, a 10, a 15 and 20, and then maybe understanding what is 1% increment equal. I don't know what the answer is, but I do think we have to get there in an orderly fashion and I would be open to seeing that.
Yeah, and like I said, it just, that way we're we, you condition yourself, you get used to this, you move the bar, get used to it, you move the bar, you get used to it. I think that's a good way.
Since he he mentioned that, yeah, I have been bringing this up, so I'm glad to see this is before us. And and Mayor, I did check, there have been some other cities and so to Member Cam Car's point. I am an incrementalist or I try to be where it's appropriate. And for this, I I've heard stories of some cities that have kind of made that big jump within later because of the way that the worksheets and stuff kind of put them in situations, they've had to go back and reduce it again. And it's just, you know, I don't want to put ourselves into that situation. So, yeah, trying to get a clear understanding of what that staircase looks like, I think is the most important part of this process. But I've only got a year left, so let's see.
Well, no, I, but I, I know.
Get it started.
I think it's, I think it's a valuable point. It's a great discussion, one that we need to be moving in that direction. But how we do it in a reasonable way to do it, so we, as much as we will try to take away unintended consequences, there'll still be an unintended consequence that we don't think about. We just be thoughtful in how we and how we do that. So any other questions on this so we can move forward with discussion?
I just, my taxable value, my taxes on my building in Pearland went up 50% as a business owner and I have no recourse other than to protest those taxes. So, again, you know, from all the individuals and business owners I've surveyed, mine was the lowest incremental increase. I've had everyone else I spoke to, well, I don't want to say everyone, because, but most of them were 100% increases. So it's a it's a huge burden and, but I'm not opposed to, you know, helping the the residential homeowner, you know. But at at what cost, you know, because I have to pass that on too. I have tenants, right? So I have to be careful as well with them, but.
Stuff like that could cost you an employee. You know what I'm saying? Because you got to pay for it.
That's exactly right, or a tenant.
Or a tenant.
You know, as and or revenue, right? So I tried to go up on my tenants last year, $100 a month, and I got huge blowback. And not that I have a, you know, a high-end Class A property, but it is an old town and I like to think that it's a Pearland business. And I got huge blowback.
Well, it's yours, it's worth something. And Missouri County Appraisal District thought it was worth 50% more, so there you go.
I've heard stories of even some of the business property stuff going up. It's like, how can a table or a chair get more expensive after it's been used? I don't know.
Trent, on to the next phase.
Thank you, Mayor. We're going to move into the FY 24 budget and look at some of the supplementals that came out of the strategic priority session we had earlier this year. So just cover the strategic priorities. We have trusted government, strong economy, safe community, sustainable infrastructure, resilient finances and whole community. So council met in a retreat on February 18th to review the strategic priorities. And you basi- basically worked through all those, developed some milestones to tie to each of the strategic priorities. And those milestones provide a general direction as well as some timeframes around that. So the strategic priorities and milestones were adopted at the March 27th meeting. And then from there, we took the milestones that really had a short timeframe and asked the departments that those were associated with to review and submit supplementals based on those for FY 24. So we've, we are going to talk tonight about some of those key ones that were in the first year or so of the milestones. And then the rest of the milestones, you'll see those in a future tracking tool that we're working on to so that we carry those forward and and track our progress on all those. So that Rachel and I are going to kind of tag team this. She's going to present the information. I'm going to kind of walk through what we're looking for tonight on each one of these. So Rachel, all yours.
Thank you. Our first strategic priority supplemental is a customer service improvement plan or a 311 call center. Currently, we have customer inquiries come through various sources. This can cause some duplication of work. So this 311 call center would create an intentional and consolidated location for all customer service inquiries. It would take us about two to three years. And our goals for fiscal year 24 would be to stand up the Cisco Call Center backbone, which is currently budgeted, and also to hire a consultant to develop the business plan, which is estimated to cost about $30,000.
So just a couple of things to add. You know, we we want our customer service to be intentional and consistent, provide high quality and documented responses to everything we work on, all the inquiries. And then make sure that as part of that documentation, we're always closing the loop. So we've been looking at how we improve that internally and we've got a lot of the tools already in place that that will help us stand this up with our Cisco call system. And then through Rock Solid, which is the the Connect to Pearland app that ties in with City Works Asset Management System. So th- those things have additional capacity and capabilities that we can try to put together a a plan to utilize those things so that, you know, we don't have multiple people all over the city that are taking different inquiries and phone calls from from citizens and businesses and everyone else that aren't really tied together. That that, you know, they can't look that address up and go, oh, you called about this last time. And, you know, know what has happened and what we need to follow up on, those sort of things. So one of the things we think we need to really make sure we do it right is to bring in someone with some extra expertise to help us develop that business plan. And so we're looking at putting around $30,000 in the FY 24 budget to move that move that forward and then have that implemented over the next two to three years. So on each of these, we're just going to kind of pause and see if there's any thoughts or or questions on on these different supplementals tied to the strategic priorities. So.
Thank you, Mayor. I love this. I think this is going to be great. One thing that I would like to see and also with our emergency services is trying to integrate text to this. I know we talked about that being something that possibly could be done for 911. But I kind of across the board, if we can do text and then also any type of integration with the website. So, I mean, just trying to really meet people where they are and not forcing them to, you know, dial. I know it's only three three numbers, but still, you know, just trying to make it as easy as possible. And if there's a way to get all this to feed into the same spot, like you said.
And we're looking at all those options as well to be a part of this, kind of a holistic approach to it. So we've got all the avenues taken care of.
Well, yeah, because I know, especially on the emergency service side of things, the reason I like it with this, I I've been in situations where, you know, I've wanted to, you know, call somebody, you know, but it's like you're in a weird situation and be really, you know, so it's like if you could just quietly send a text or something like that, I think that would be really helpful. And I think probably the same for this. It's just sometimes easier to just throw a text message, sort of picture or something. But thank you for bringing this. This is fantastic. I think this is definitely in line with the trusted government. Thanks.
Thanks, Mayor. I I want to say, I want to say thank you. In when in your verbalization of this a minute ago, you said created an intentional and consistent customer service experience. I think that's exactly what we need and thank you guys for taking the lead on that. In the in the presentation, it says intentional and consolidated. I think the intentional is is exactly what's needed. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments on this? Member Kozel?
I just had a comment as far as the Connect to Pearland. I've had several people tell me that they really do enjoy using that and it's a great asset that the city has, so good job there.
Remember Cam Car?
Can we go to slide 38? I had some questions on the motor pool.
We're not there yet.
Oh, we're not?
We're going, we're going one of these at a time. Do you have a comment on this 91, this 311 call center?
I was getting so excited. Dad gum. I'm sorry about that, Mayor. I apologize.
So you're all in on the 311 call center?
I'm generally pro emergency response.
This isn't just pro emergency. This is any calls for service, sidewalk repair, street repair, everything else, not just 911.
Yeah, it's better than what we got. I think it's great.
Good deal.
All right, thank you, Mayor. We'll move to the next one. Rachel?
Our next supplemental ties into safe community. It is our large apparatus replacement plan for our fire department. We currently have two newer trucks at Fire Station 8 that are currently the only large fire apparatuses that are paying lease fees into our motor pool fund. We have three on order, one which was ordered in FY 22 mid-year allocation, as well as one pumper and one ladder truck that was part of the FY 23 budget from ARPA funds. Once they're delivered, they'll begin paying lease fees into the motor pool fund so that they can fund their scheduled replacement. The large apparatus replacement plan proposed for the future years includes five additional that currently meet the replacement criteria for a total of 6.8 million. This includes three pumpers, one tanker and one appar- one ambulance. And then there will be two additional apparatus that will meet the replacement criteria before their expected delivery date, even if they were ordered today for an additional 2.59 million, which is an additional ladder and an additional ambulance. So our options for purchasing one or two apparatus in FY 24 include utilization of the motor pool fund balance. We were reimbursed money from TERS, about $8.5 million total, of which 3.4 has been spent on vehicle replacements, which leaves us a balance of 5.1 million. So we propose potentially funding one complete apparatus from that, as well as the initial deposit on another one. We could fund over time based on delivery dates, which is how that ties in. This is where we fund what to do in year one in this current fiscal year and what would we do upon delivery of the apparatus in future fiscal years, in those future fiscal years. We could do short-term financing or a lease purchase agreement. The reason that we do not want to replace all apparatus at the same time involves the general fund impacts as adding lease fees. We add lease fees to the budget in the fiscal year after the apparatus is delivered. And if we don't phase in the purchases to moderate these lease fees, the impact on the general fund will be too great. As you can see, these apparatus cost quite a bit of money and so we annualize that over their replacement lifespan.
Thank you, Rachel. So, you know, from that, we have lots of needs and we want to move into those incrementally over the next few years. So I think the intention at this point is to try to get two additional pieces on order in FY 24, knowing that the lead times are very long on those and then trying to catch up on the rest of them as we move forward beyond FY 24. So I guess the the point here is, you know, if if we, you know, we want to buy what we can from the dollars we do have available. But as far as funding over time or short-term financing or lease purchase for that second unit that we're looking at in 24, is there any? is there any, any preferences there or any heartburn over any of those type of financing mechanisms? And again, we're still looking at the motor pool. You know, going back to when we put that TERS reimbursement money in there, that was to try to kickstart the motor pool and get some additional funds in there so we could get more vehicles into the motor pool quicker. But we still want to move into those incrementally as well. So we have spent a big chunk of that, but we do have enough where we can move forward with at least one of these purchases in the next year. But just wanted to kind of touch on the other ways we can finance these large expensive pieces of equipment and see if there's any, any thoughts or concerns of, of using any of these alternative ways, not just in FY 24, but moving forward.
Real, real quick, and on that, just as, as far as just base level understanding, you know, moving forward. So these types of apparatus, what is the standard shelf life of these, these types of piece of equipment? And I know wear and tear is dependent upon a lot of things, but.
Absolutely. So I'll talk about as much of it as I know, and then I may have to call on Chief Taylor. He is here. All right. So, so in the past, what we've, what we've done is the expectation has been 10 years frontline and another 10 years in reserve. And that really creates a lot of, a lot of issues because you, you basically, you get to a point where you've got a unit in reserve that's often not available. And, and you're, and you're really kind of pushing the limit on some of your vehicles, even in the, in the, being in the frontline. So depending on what it is, whether it's a, a pumper or a ladder truck, basically we're looking at frontline service anywhere from eight to 10 years. And then that reserve service anywhere, depending on which one it is, from two to four years. So really bringing that cycle down quite a bit. And so, you know, what, what that kind of reflects is you've got it in frontline. When you, when you end it being in frontline, based on the delivery times of these vehicles, you want to be ordering it there or very, very shortly thereafter so that when you get to the end of the reserve years, you've got your new one here. We've, you know, we've struggled with the age of our heavy apparatus fleet, especially in the last couple of years, so that we've got, you know, three of them on order and looking to get some additional ones on order. We're, we're really pushing to do that. It's kind of like if, if you back up, you know, a year and a half, two years ago on our ambulance fleet, we were kind of in the same boat. And we've been able to really catch those up. So we want to do the same as, as much as is practical with the impacts it'll have on the general fund when we add those lease fees. So Chief, do you have anything to add or if there's more specific questions about how we use these vehicles and the time Chiefs available as well?
So, you know, obviously there's a shelf life and then from a short-term financing, and, and I would agree, if you're going to finance these, they need to be short-term, certainly not 20-year bond debt. What, what would we look at? What would that look like, short-term financing, four years, five years, three years? What, what would we anticipate there? And same thing with the lease purchase, lease purchase agreement or short-term financing, those are interchangeable in my mind. Just, it's going to be short-term.
It's just who does it and what's the most economical financial mechanism between doing a lease purchase or a short-term. But Amy, maybe if you can expound upon.
So we have, you know, Wells Fargo is our institution that we do our banking with. But there are a number of other institutions that we have investments and things with that we have spoken with about the possibility of doing some sort of short-term lease. It would probably be like a five to seven year situation, kind of like a tax note. But it would obviously not exceed the life of the vehicle. It would be in compliance with our policies and everything.
Chief, do you have anything?
Now, that's the, Trent nailed it with all that information. Our current ordering time is anywhere from 36 to 42 months. So just like he said, you want to play ahead so that when you get to that, into that reserve timeframe, you're trying to replace it on that, that, you know, timing. It's just a situation we're in right now. For instance, Engine 5 is our busiest engine in the city. It's on its second engine. It's 11 years old and it just blew it out yesterday. So we just lost Engine 5. So it's just a, it's a challenge that we have currently from the, the previous years. But trying to make them work the best we can. But those timeframes that Trent gives you are completely accurate.
Open that up. Questions, comments? Remember Cam Car?
Got three real quick. Mr. Taylor, how many, Chief Taylor, sorry. How many, or the number of fire stations we have, how many engines are in our fleet? Between, not discriminating between pumper and ladder, just total, how many are in there?
Heavy apparatus, we have six stations. We have seven frontline pieces of equipment. So we have one piece of heavy apparatus at every station except for Firehouse 8. Station 8 has two pieces of fire. It's a dual company house. So we have an engine and a tower there at that station. So there's seven frontline. We have 10 total.
And then on slide 36, which is two back, I guess you have two new, two of those seven are relatively new trucks?
The two that are at Station 8 are our newest. When they opened that station, what, two and a half years ago? That's when we got those two. Those are the ones that Rachel mentioned when it's on the lease purchase. Those two are in that program.
Then when you got here, what would you say or describe as the, the status of the fleet? How would you describe it in your own words? You know, fire engines better than any of us do. So I mean, what would you, how, how would you characterize it?
Less than desirable. You know, we make them work the best we can, but to try to provide the type of services that our residents expect and that quite frankly, we expect to be able to provide, they're not at that level. And it's just from years of a lot of different reasons and having extending equipment further than we should have probably over the years. But it's just, it's a kind of a perfect storm which has caught us at this juncture.
I'd like to commend the team. We have that one ISO rating with less than desirable. So I don't know how you guys are doing it. It sounds like MacGyver is back there doing something. So I appreciate that.
I'd like to, I want to credit our, our fleet department. We've really revamped our program the last few months. And what we're doing is a partnership to really keep things fluid and moving in a positive direction. Eric and his staff are bending over backwards to really work with us and, you know, relying on us as technical professionals on what our suggestions are. And they're, they're doing a great job.
Real quick on slide 38, this is more for the findings people. How much TERS reimbursement are we talking about allocating?
Are you talking about allocating for one piece of equipment or?
I guess you guys are saying the remaining TERS.
So the TERS reimbursement, this TERS reimbursement came in several years ago. I can't remember what year it came in, but it was a reimbursement for when, when we built the western portion of Broadway out to FM 521. So we got the reimbursement from that and we use that the year we received that to catch up on a lot of our backlog on vehicle replacements and then put the rest of it in the motor pool fund so that we could continue to catch up on our vehicle replacements until we have everything into the motor pool.
Got it. And one last question. What department does Fire currently report to in terms of manager, city manager or assistant city manager?
Ron, Assistant City Manager Ron Fraser.
Okay. On slide 38, oh, right there, the general fund impacts. Could you elaborate just a little bit on those, please?
So when we buy a new vehicle or a new large apparatus, you know, these range from like around a million dollars to up to $2 million. So if that piece of equipment, once it arrives, if it's going to be in frontline service for 10 years and it's a million dollar piece of equipment, we want to start putting $100,000 into the motor pool every year, once it's put into service. So at the end of 10 years, and we'll, you know, adjust for inflation as well. But at the end of its 10-year frontline life, when it goes into reserve, we've got, you know, a million plus dollars in the motor pool to purchase that next replacement vehicle. And then it'll arrive a couple of years later. So that's the impacts that these have on the, the general fund. So, you know, we buy a couple of them in one year and it's a, it's a pretty good, pretty good jump to the general fund impact, what we've got to put into the motor pool.
Any other questions, comments? Member Cosa?
Yes. Mayor, real quickly, just I think some of her confusion is we're paying the lease fees to ourselves, not to a third party, correct? That's what I think she's trying to get to.
That's, that's correct. And so, you know, and I know we talked about lease purchase and things like that. And that, that is kind of the, the complication of, of, of short-term financing or lease purchasing is, is you're, you're paying the actual note on what you borrowed to buy it. And we want to be paying also into the motor pool so that at the end of that one's life, we're not having to do a lease purchase. We're not having to do short-term financing. We're, we have the funds in the motor pool to replace it.
Yeah. So each department has, and I use air quotes, lease to the motor pool. And then that's outside of like a lease to a bank or a finance.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Chief Taylor and, and Trent, in regards to a letter that Chief Taylor wrote back on August 11th, and then it was updated April 10th this year. When I was reading it, there was a couple of lines that stuck out to me. It said, "Over the last year, because of the fleet age condition and poor maintenance, we had, have had times where apparatus and medics units have been closed or unable to respond because of equipment was out of service needing repairs." I think y'all were hitting about that earlier when Member Cam Car was talking to you. And Trent, it kind of harkens back to a discussion we had on the front-end loader on our maintenance stuff. I know at the time, Chief Taylor, we spoke about the maintenance on our equipment and whatnot. I think you kind of alluded just now that it's improving. Is that what I understood?
Absolutely, we do. And I know that Fleet has plans in the future of a, a full facility that we will have placed somewhere down the road as the city continues to grow. And being able to get that equipment maintained and done it in a, in a quick manner and getting it back on the street. They're really juggling a lot of plates right now, working with what they have to get that done. So again, I think that we're really moving in the right direction, but with limited means to get that done.
Right, right. Which I understand that and I appreciate that insight as far as that goes. And I, Trent, appreciate the discussions Trent and you and I have had about that one piece of equipment because I've always felt our maintenance was a little less than desirable.
Sure. And just a little bit more detail on, on maintaining our heavy fire apparatuses is that we, we typically do most of the, the major repairs and, and the maintenance, the preventative maintenance work, we do that through contract right now with, with a company. We do a handful of things in-house that are very cost-effective for us to do, but most of that is, is, is contracted out. And I think, you know, on some of these vehicles we've had for many, many years that, you know, as the, as the fire department was growing very rapidly and, 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 you know, trying to build up their fleet, that those were not always in a preventative, a good preventative maintenance program through those contracted, those contractors. So just one of the big changes we've done with the three apparatus that are on order right now is within the, the cost of the, of the, the vehicles themselves, we have extended those warranties that'll, so that we'll have a warranty on them for most of their frontline service life. And then we built into that also the preventative maintenance. I think it's two times a year preventative maintenance schedule so that we've got all that lined out, ready to go when the vehicle gets here. And so just another step on top of what we've, we've been able to accomplish since in the last year or so with the internal improvements, another step on top of that with the new vehicles as they come in that we've built in, being prepared to maintain those properly so that we get the full life out of those.
Right. And, and I appreciate that, that you're taking that step. And hopefully it's not only within our fire department, but our heavy equipment, our fleet, you know, as far as trucks and regular vehicles that we use day-to-day, that we can stretch that and maintain them to where we get the full life and full expectancy from that. One other thing that I did have on a question that I'd asked a while back, it was when one of our budget meetings about the, the fleet motor pool, which you and I have had several discussions on, last one, I can't remember if it was 702, 703 account number. We had approximately $14 million in that account for purchasing different pieces of vehicles, heavy equipment, stuff like that. Here again, at some point, I'd like to know what's the best practice as far as percentage, dollar amount, whatever it is to where we maintain an adequate amount, but not where we have too much in the, in the fund. So I would still like to see that happen.
Absolutely. We've got, I think we've got it in the last slide tonight that's got our schedule moving forward. We've got another workshop scheduled to look at internal service funds, which will include the motor pool so we can look at that in, in more detail.
Right. And, and motor pool IT, of course, IT and, and facility maintenance are just on the, you know, front end of it. So it's, it's got a ways to go, but still there's got to be some type of dollar amount percentage that we need to be looking at as.
Yes, absolutely. Based on the, the policy and some of the changes we're making there, we'll, we'll be able to tie that down.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Along the same lines, in terms of the options you've laid out, and since this is a, a internal service fund, I'd like to see a cash flow. If I'm, if you're running this as a business, where's, where's the low point in cash? And let's just look at the financing to get to that period. Because once we turn the corner, the, the lease fee should cover everything else. I think we have to look at it in total before we, we figure out what financing is needed.
Just my item, for the repairs that we were doing and managing, for the inflation that we put on that, are we using the municipal index or are we using consumer price index on that?
As far as what we put on what the lease fees are moving forward?
Yeah, just how do you, because it sounds like we're going to be doing more long-term maintenance. And it's just, do we have the adequate dollars in the budget? And obviously CPI does its own thing and the municipal cost index does its own thing. And so I'm just wondering, which one are you using?
So I think, you know, what we're using for FY 24 is that general 3% that we looked at in the last part of the presentation for overall cost of supplies and things like that. So, you know, I know that's not going to cover everything. So we've got, we've got to look at where it's not. But I mean, we're not using a specific CPI. We're looking at things, you know, look, looking at things and what's going on in that portion of the business.
Thank you.
All right. Next up.
One of the requests was the evaluation of the effectiveness of coverage for our police and fire departments or follow-up studies to Berkshire and City Gate. However, our fire department and police department are undergoing recent and current efforts to maintain their standardization. So our fire department recently completed a three-phase study to result in an ISO 1 rating. And our police department is currently undertaking accreditation with the Texas Police Chiefs Association. Additionally, our fire department is engaging with the Center for Public Safety Excellence on a community-driven strategic plan. So engaging in a similar study in FY 24 just based off of staffing may serve to be redundant to their other efforts. Alternatively, to complete a study on bringing the emergency dispatch services back into the city to include the fire department may be more beneficial.
So just to answer a question from earlier, our, our 911 system does take text. So we're, we're, we're there on that. So with, with this item, I know coming out of the strategic priorities for safe community, was looking at the evaluation of effectiveness and coverage for both departments, fire and police. After talking through that with, with both chiefs and, and their staff, you know, with the initiatives that we've completed and are, and are undertaking right now, they, they, you know, advise that maybe the better way to move forward is to look at the, our emergency dispatch services. And because that, that does have a significant impact on response times and that we have a portion of it contracted out for fire, we, we think looking at that is, is a one way of really impacting that response time. So the recommendation or the suggestion is, is that instead of updating like a Berkshire or City Gate type study, we look at this to evaluate something we've looked at in the past, but really need to do a deep dive and a good evaluation of that. So that's the recommendation. We don't have a number on that right now, but we'll, if, if the, if the direction is acceptable, we'll go work, work to put together a number to look at that.
Questions, comments on this portion? Remember Cam Car?
Yes. Are we going to put these on a more routine item? I know that I was here for the last one, but is there like an every two or three years? I know that we're running, is there like a plan maybe for the future, maybe have just a more defined? We know 18 months out, we're going to go do one for the next, right, next timeframe just to help us keep us more up to date.
So maybe let the chiefs respond to that. Looking at what's the right frequency to look at something along these lines?
For the police department, I'm not sure there's.
For the police department, I'm not sure there's an exact time that you need to do it. Every three years, every five years? You know, we're constantly looking forward, always looking how to do things better. I don't mind somebody coming in here and going through our department to evaluate what we're doing and maybe improve on some things. Like the Berkshire one, we took some things away from it, some things we didn't agree with. There's always, there's always some value in it. I would think three years might be a little bit, you probably can't even get a good sense of the changes you're making in only three years. So I would say at least five years, maybe seven before we looked at anything other than that.
I would agree with that. You know, five to seven years is usually optimum on that. Any opportunity you have to take a 360-degree look at your organization and find those weak spots in there and whether you're doing a SWOT analysis or a SOAR analysis, similar to what we're going to be doing here in the near month with SIPSY doing a five-year strategic plan, it's community-driven from the fire department side. So that'll bring us a lot of answers as well as we complete that process.
What I like about this approach, obviously with just coverage, you know, fire department coverage is one thing, police department coverage is different. And, you know, both are having to manage expectation in a changing world, especially policing with what's happening north of us, what's happening around us, what's happening through us. And having to, you know, make sure that we are effectively covering our city, you know, or covering our city with the most effective way, you know, possible. I know both departments going through that, fire department and just, and just growth of the department in, you know, moving from that volunteer to the combo to now, you know, all paid staff and just that evolution of the process. And it's been, you know, fascinating to sit and watch, but also it's very expensive, but necessary for our city and the safety of our city. So, yeah, I think, you know, five and what I would say is if we see movements, especially from a crime standpoint, that we're not waiting on a coverage, you know, and I know the chiefs won't do that, but we're not, we're not waiting on a coverage study, you know, to make adjustments when we need to. So, but I know it's an ever-changing world and y'all's world. So glad to see that we're doing something. Any other questions, comments about this slide and this concept? Seeing none, oh, Woody?
Yeah, just a quick question on how were you responding on our times to, from if we get a call in, say the fire department or whatever, in order to get to where we're at? You know, we looked at it in the beginning, a selection of fire stations or certain locations within the cities to be able to reach at a quicker amount of time, you know, in cities. So I just wondered, is that still holding up before we add? We've had a lot of development since then. But is that timing on being able to get out in certain areas in the cities based upon where our station's at now? That was the whole point years ago was that was the whole point of doing where there's located.
Chief Taylor, did you hear that? I know he moved away from the mic.
I'll let maybe Chief Taylor address the specifics of our response times right now. But I just want to point out a couple of things that are in the works that are going to really help impact that. One is the Opticom system, the traffic signal preemption system that council approved not too long ago that's being implemented right now. And then, of course, we have Fire Station 7 on the bond package coming up with the election that'll fill a hole we have on response times. But Chief, any other commentary on where we are with response times compared to the last time we studied it?
No, absolutely. I think Opticom will make a positive change for us. You know, I've run with Opticom my entire career. It would be new here in Pearland, for those that aren't familiar with that. 110 traffic signals in the city will be programmed with this technology, also in our heavy fire apparatus, so that basically when we're coming to an intersection, it gives us the green light, clears out ahead of us and reduces the opportunity for accidents. It speeds up our response time, reduces wear and tear. So there's a lot of positives with that. So we're very grateful that we have that in process due to your direction in October. But also with Firehouse 7 in particular, our response times aren't where they need to be. Currently, they're up over 10 and a half minutes to that district. So if you're looking at Bailey Road between the water tower and the nettorium where that station will be placed, we have just under 400 homes coming in on the north-south side of Bailey between Pearland High and the bridge. Also have 1,100 homes actively coming into the Massey Oaks area even further down south with development coming in on either side. So we're looking at another 3,500 homes on either side down there. So to try to reach that, that response timeframe of seven and a half minutes or less, we're well above that right now. And that's where we've strategically looked at where these firehouses need to be placed so that we can provide the services in a timely manner to our residents, whether it be a fire getting there between that six to eight-minute threshold or whether it be a patient that's critically injured and losing oxygenation to the brain. We still want to hit that same timeframe of under seven and a half. And we're well above that right now.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Chief Taylor, real quick question. Could that, if our Fire Station 7 is not complete by the time those new neighborhoods are built out, that potentially affect our ISO rating?
It could possibly. They, they look at it now, it used to be every 10 years that they reevaluate the ISO. It now is reevaluated every five years. So yes, if it were not built and we were reevaluated during that timeframe and our standards didn't meet the population growth in that part of town, it could affect us.
So, you know, being that we're all familiar with our homeowner rates and whatnot, that does truly affect our homeowner rates, not only homeowners, but our commercial property rates as well. So I just want to, I just want to reiterate the fact that it's very important that ISO rating one is maintained. And kudos to you guys for doing that, thank you.
Member Kate?
Chief Taylor, if those houses are built and the fire stations out there, what fire stations will have to cover that area?
Well, if everybody's in the firehouse like they should be, usually you're going to see Station 2 or Station 3 would be the closest to respond to that area. However, have you seen, and you've seen in the Citizens Fire Academy, and we've talked about that recently, if we're out on a fire or another, another emergency response, they could be coming from all the way across town, 25 minutes from Firehouse 5 or Firehouse 8.
And is it Fire Station 3 one of the busiest ones also?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions, comments on this? Good stuff, Trent, move on.
The next request was for additional emergency management training and/or drills. So we recommend adding ICS 305, the All Hazards Incident Management Team, to have that class take place in Pearland. And it focuses on the importance of developing and operating as a functional all hazards incident management team. And the estimated cost of the course is $26,000 for 25 people. It would be a recurring cost to cover the class this year and for future years for the IMT team.
So not a whole lot here. We recommend doing this and I'm planning on putting it in the budget. So if there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer those.
What are some things included in All Hazards?
So.
All of them, okay, thank you.
You're going to have anything from a major industrial fire to a train derailment, you know, anything along those lines that we would have to respond to. Airplane crash, even the, even the school shooting incident or active shooter incident are going to be handled as an all hazards response by multiple agencies. And we're going to have to coordinate that response through the incident management team.
You answered my second question. Active shooter was my second question, so thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions, comments on this one? Keep moving.
Under our whole community strategic priority, we have two things. One is the Tom Bass Park Amphitheater. We estimate that a preliminary engineering report would be a $50,000 cost share with Harris County Precinct 1. And the PER will provide the information on the necessary improvements and the associated costs of the amphitheater structure. And an unknown amount of future funding would then be needed as to share the cost of improvements. The annual regional event, the milestone target date for this was the spring of 2024. Our staff recommended target date is the spring of 2025. We would like to request clarification on the desired outcome to engage an event firm such as tourism and economic impact versus local engagement, who the target audience would be and what type of festival components to include such as musical, food, drink, cultural, art, extreme sports, technology, and so forth.
Thank you, Rachel. And we'll kind of take these one by one, even though they potentially can be tied, could be tied together depending on the type of annual regional event. But the Tom Bass Amphitheater, Harris County, I think, has got us a draft interlocal where our cost share to take a look at what needs to be done, there's about $50,000. I think the, the, there's a kind of an unknown of what that could potentially cost in the future, but that's the first step to understanding that. So I guess the first question is, do we want to move forward with that partnership with Tom Bass Park or with Harris County Precinct 1? And then, you know, of course, Rachel just kind of spelled out questions that we want to kind of work through on the annual regional event. But also, you know, in our milestone target, target date, it was spring of '24. But really to go through figuring out what this is, you know, the recommendation is that we would, we would need to target spring of '25 to really stand something like this up. And then, you know, we had a, like with the, we had a memo attached as well. It was a lot of the information we saw on a white paper last year that kind of lays out what we need to do moving forward. We've talked to a couple of event companies that do these type of things. And so if we want to move forward, we would engage further with them to work through, you know, with the type of event. But we really think if we move forward with something that's, that's a large type event, bringing in somebody to help us put that together, run it, is really the model to go with. Because we've, you know, as long as we continue with our other large events and our smaller events that we do, we're really hard pressed to add anything that would be managed and run by our staff.
Real, real quick, so, you know, when we, what type of event or what would be, you know, the type of attendance that we would be looking at in an event at Tom Bass Park?
Carrie, you want to take that one?
Sure, so the amphitheater at Tom Bass Park will accommodate between the seats that they have and then the actual berm, roughly about 5,000 to 6,000 people. And then there's a lot of additional space surrounding that amphitheater that you can, you know, add in different attractions and entertainment.
So just by way of scale, I'm not trying to compare the two that, but just scale, you know, the small amphitheater that we have at Independence Park, what will that accommodate on the hill and, you know, right there next to the stage?
So at the Celebration of Freedom last year, we estimated 18,000 people in the park. I think you could do the same at Tom Bass Park.
Okay, probably more, I would imagine.
Without.
Such a, well, at the amphitheater, I agree, but total in the park.
Total space-wise, more.
Is so, so big. What comes to mind, just real quick, is, you know, we had this international festival that did so well, but any green space that we had it in got filled in. So they couldn't, couldn't host it here anymore. I'm thinking, you know, something to that scale. And there were, you know, plenty of folks there. And here, we could probably do it on a grander scale or grow into it or grow, you know, grow larger. That just, and I'm not saying we do that one. That was one that came to mind that, you know, even out off of 288, I think the first couple of years they did it, they did it there because you had empty space. And then all of a sudden, you know, the commercial came in. And I think they did it over here by the rec center one year. And again, the infrastructure just wasn't there. Well, that was the crawfish boil. And it just, the infrastructure's not there to house it, but yet super well attended.
Yes.
So, you know, and anyway, questions, comments?
A question, Mayor. You know, I'm looking at this and, I mean, we're looking at for preliminary engineering 50,000 and a cost share with Harris County, I realize that. But we have, I mean, if you, you were there at the event last weekend, we have a huge sports complex in Shadow Creek Ranch that can accommodate that currently today, right now, as well as, as well as Independence Park. So 50,000, that's just for the engineering report. I don't know that, you know, maybe we should just kind of, you know, use one of our existing facilities and see how it goes.
Mr. Kate?
I was just wondering, the target date is two, you wanted to move it to the spring of 2025? That is two years from now.
Yeah, I think we, you know, we've, we've got a, we've got, probably got a full year of, you know, kind of figuring out what it is, working with, if we want to move forward, working with these event companies to, to kind of shape that out as to, you know, what, what fits good, what, you know, compared to what's happening around us and those sort of things, really figure it out. And then the next year would be getting all the things in place to stand it up for that following spring. Anything to add to that, Carrie?
Yeah, it takes for an event of this magnitude, it takes a solid year for the planning and marketing and promotion of the event. So what we'd be looking at is a portion of the funding would fall in FY24 because you have to start booking entertainment and securing artists to come out and perform and things like that. And then the remainder of the cost would be in the following fiscal year. The spring of 2025 timeframe was selected just because we, working with the Convention and Visitors Bureau, looking at what else is going on in our community, where are our slowest times for the hotels? Ultimately, that can change based on your vision and what you're looking for for an event. But if we're wanting to attract tourism, we're wanting to put heads in beds, then that is a good timeframe for filling in the May timeframe. We don't have as many other activities happening.
Thank you for explaining that. And as far as why Tom Bass or instead of Independence or the, I forgot what the other place you said, sports complex, parking with that huge amount of people would be, would be something to think about. And there's, parking at Independence Park is not good. You have to, you know, we have to move people to Pearland High School and the overflow here at the annex. And parking, I don't know what parking is like at the sports complex. I'm not sure, but parking at Tom Bass is good. They have a lot of parking because it is huge. So that's just something I wanted to mention, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess it's, in my mind, it's important to note that this was kind of the strategic priority that was on the bubble that day. And I sit here when, when the fire chief says we're struggling with our apparatus and I, I struggle with this spend. CVB wants to do it, great, hot tax, I can get there on that side. But, but spending money out of the general fund for something like this, I struggle with. As well as the PER, I mean, the PER costs 50K. Then we got to go to a phase two PER. And before you know it, we look up, hey, we're already a million dollars into this. We got to throw another 9 million at it. And I don't know, it's easier to stop it now and focus on kind of the core things than go down this path. My two cents.
Thank you, Mayor. In probably the most shocking turn of events in the history of the universe, I agree with Member Carbone on the Tom Bass spend. It's, it just seems like, I'm looking at this and thinking, I just know it's going to be a pretty big number. And we've got great inventory. I think we've got a bond proposition right now that can kind of, you know, fortify the existing parks that we have and make those to where we can hold better events. I know parking is an issue for sure, but I think that that can possibly be addressed. It's been addressed, you know, in the past. And if we have shuttles, things like that to help it, I'm sure it'll be less expensive than whatever the Tom Bass cost share is going to be. But regarding the annual regional event, I really totally believe this is going to be a great thing for the community for the clarification of desired outcome. I think honestly, the primary objective, one of the things that we've talked about over and over and over again, I think most of us as candidates, as well as actual sitting elected officials, is trying to figure out how to bring the two, you know, quote unquote, ends or sides, whatever you call them, Pearland together. And having a local engagement, objective kind of lead the planning of a regional event, I think that tourism and economic impact piece will kind of fill in, you know, as we do the planning. I mean, people will say, oh, Pearland's got this cool thing going on. But, you know, we all know about these other regions, like League City has their music event, Alvin has their music event, and their, their regional events that draw people. I mean, a lot of people from Pearland go there and all over Breaux County go to the Alvin event. And a lot of people all over Galveston County go to the League City event. You know, if we had some, even like Pasadena has their strawberry festival. If we had a Pear Festival or something, you know, and I think too. we had a Pear Festival or something, you know, and I think two years is an appropriate timeline to plan something like this. But I think it would be really great to really bring the community together and just focus on, on being Pearlanders, you know, even if it's not just a one day thing, but a weekend event or something like that. And I think we, if this bond proposition passes to move into phase two of Independence, that's going to make it, you know, a better venue to host something like this. And we've got a, a decent timeline to pursue that. I really like that idea. But as far as the Tom Bass Amphitheater, I think it'd be fantastic for us to have that. But I, I do, I, I have that same kind of, you know, apprehension about getting, you know, so deep into it and then we get stuck with this huge price tag. That's going to be hard to say no to. So those are my thoughts on this. Thank you, Mayor.
Real, real good. So Carrie, real quick about Tom Bass. I mean, is this, this, I guess, item number one, Tom Bass, you know, amphitheater and the PER and all of this, is, is this Harris County saying we need to do all this or are we saying we need to do all this?
The request originally came from Harris County, and, and they were interested in us partnering with them to help revitalize the amphitheater and then hopefully in the future partner on programming to, to make that a, a destination for Pearland and the surrounding communities.
Okay. I mean, that, that kind of answers, you know, what I was, what I was suspecting. Because I know the commissioner has asked us time and time again about the park. It isn't our ETJ. So that, that, that tells me, that tells me a little bit more about that. And I, and I'm wondering, I mean, why do any of these needs to be done for any event? I mean, can you not have an event out there now in its current state? And I, I don't know.
They are currently doing events there, not to this size. It's more smaller fun runs. When we worked with the Parks Department to get a better idea, they, really for a lot of the technology and the different things that they utilize to put on a show or a concert, they're doing smaller scale events. So they don't have that high demand. Several years ago, they had an event production company that ran the amphitheater. Once that discontinued, then now they're just managing it with, similar to a park pavilion. So it's just not getting them at the types of events that they had seen out there historically and that it could potentially see.
Okay. All right. That, that helps.
Just real quick, on the PER, what is the, the contour trend? Unlike what, just obviously you start dialing in cost, but what size contour are we talking about of a project that they're trying to get their arms around?
I'm, I'm not sure. I could put a number on that. I don't know if Carrie would venture a guess, but, you know, I think it's, they, when we, we've been out there a couple of times with them and, and just taking a look at, you know, the, the existing lighting system and trusses, they basically think it all needs to come down. There's, you know, other stuff within the building that needs to be upgraded and things like that. And so the, this would, you know, take a good look at all those different things, all the infrastructure around it and put some numbers on what it would take, you know, to kind of fully reactivate it to what it was originally intended.
Is there a vision or a?
I, I have, I don't have a dollar I can put on it at all.
So it's a real question mark.
Right.
Okay. Darren, real quick, does this item cover the CVB mandate with hot dollars? If we were to go, let's just say we go down this path for just half a second.
Can they?
Can they?
I would have to look at the statutory guidelines, but I, I do believe that the funds could be used for some of that development possibly.
I know we're somewhere hovering around $6 million with no good thing to do on it yet. And so if they're willing to go do this, I think it's at least worth the look. I mean, we can use it, that pipeline of dollars. I think that makes sense at least.
Well, and, yeah, to Mayor Pro Tim's point, you know, if, if CVB wants to spend the 50 and see what the, you know, see what the next line costs, then we, you know, that could be our line of getting out of it or moving forward.
Sure. And, and Crawfish Festival, that was real good. Other people would come from out of town, maybe. And then we could do, we could make it a fundraiser where the person who raises the most money for charity could be the king crawfish or queen crawfish. I think there's a lot of opportunities here. That's all I'm saying.
Mayor, I just wanted to say that i- if, if we go down this Tom Bass, you know, amphitheater route and something comes back, just, I don't want, my fear is, I see this as an auditorium 2.0 and we're the school district. And I just, so I would want to make sure that everything was super delineated as far as.
School district got a great deal out of that, by the way.
Yeah, well.
They got a great deal. It's, we got the, the raw deal.
Yeah, I think you get the, the spirit of what I'm saying. I just want to make sure that it would be super delineated on what our responsibilities would potentially be if we went down that road. I just, that's my, as I said, I want to.
Just, just for the record.
Unfortunately, we're not.
For the record, I'm a no on this.
Next, Mayor Pro Tim? Seeing these, the way they go before, I hear, hey, we want to bring Pearland east and west together. And you go with this Tom Bass and you bring in CVB. And the CVB is to put heads in beds. They don't give a damn about east and west side Pearland. So that, that's a, that's, you got to reconcile that at some point. And, and the two don't drive in my mind. Like to your point, again, if they want to spend 50 to find out what the next number is, and the next number is a couple million, and they can pull it out and do it, that's one thing. But if it's 10 million, we cut bait and move on.
And to be fair, they're, they are two separate things. I think we're just trying to put them together. But yes, understood.
Yep, yep, yep. All right.
All right. So a little less clear on that one, but I think what we'll, I think what we'll do is, is we will, you know, we'll look at being able to spend hot taxes on, on taking a look at Tom Bass Park. It sounds like there is some, some desire to look at a, a regional event, but maybe we're not real gelled on exactly what that looks like. So I think that's maybe something, you know, we can.
Whether or not it's there. I mean.
And whether or not it's there, yeah.
And, and I, I think it's real clear. I, I think we need to know more of that second number, not the 50. And, and, I mean, is it this number or is it this number?
Right.
I think that's really the.
So if we can fund with hot taxes and everybody's willing to do that and see what the, the next number is, and then that'll help us decide, you know, know whether that's a potential venue or we're looking at one of our existing venues like Independence Park. That might help us define what, what it is as well.
Yeah. And I think managing expectation with Harris County Precinct One is, we, you know, it, the 50 is one number, but we really need to know what that other number is before we can say we're in. That, that's really, and I would hope, you know, any commissioner would understand that. And that, that's really, that's the number we've got to know before we can just jump, jump off the diving board.
Yeah. Well, and we'll, if, if we're able to fund it through the hot taxes, we'll communicate that as well. Is that we, this is an iterative process for us. We need to know that before there's any, any further commitment. So.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Um, I, we've had a lot of discussion up here. I'd kind of like to get Tracy's input. As far as 50,000, as far as if it was two or three million dollars, is this something that CVB would like to entertain to do?
Thank you for that question. So I will defer to legal on whether or not that is a justified and allowable use of hot funds. At first blush, I would think that it's borderline allowable. But to Member Carbone's point, use of hot funds does have the obligation tied to visitation. So we would need to have the impact to our local hotels. We also recognize benefit to sales tax revenue and driving visitation for day trippers. But we do have that requirement that there is visitation tied to use of hot funds.
Thank you. Good stuff.
Just to clarify, I've, I've pulled up the, the statute here. And as you look at it, I mean, it can be used for certain types of sports facilities and parks, but not necessarily just any type of park improvement. However, the funds could be used for the promotion of regional events that are, occur there that could bring heads in beds, as Councilmember Carbone referenced.
All right. More to come?
More to come. And one other revenue source would be EDC. I don't know if there's any desire for that. We've got other priorities there, but just, just, it is something that can be spent on that type of expenditure.
How much more do we have?
Um, I think, is this the last one, the last strategic priority? So, so I believe this is the last strategic priority. Everything else will go pretty quick. So we'll jump into this one.
The last one relates to our whole community strategic priority and includes the Old Town, Old Town Master Plan update. Recently Sullivan Brothers Development Agreement was signed and the HDAC Mobility Study will take place to evaluate the one where, one-way pair concept will kick off this summer. Additional recommended actions include looking at existing conditions, housing, transportation, facilities and infrastructure improvements, and focus generally on the original Old Town site plus targeted adjacent areas with realistic implementation goals, PEDC funding, and the ability to dovetail with the HDAC Mobility Study that will be done in fiscal years 24 and 25.
Thank you, Rachel. So again, we, you know, we wanted to kind of put the concept out, back out there from the whole community milestone and see if we're hitting the mark on what was asked for here. We think, you know, kind of dovetailing this with what HDAC is going to look at is very important. And we could fund this with the EDC dollars as well. So just want to make sure kind of what we, we looked here is, or recommended plan is, is what the council was, was looking for when we went through that milestone.
Questions, thoughts?
Again, no, I like the idea of taking a look at EDC funds and, and working with Old Town site, you know, specifically the infrastructure and redevelopment of certain areas. I think we've, we've beat that dead horse pretty good over the last few months. And Matt and your team have, have agreed to work with us pretty well in that area. So I know that we, we have spoken a couple of different times about, you know, those guys, PDC, you know, earmarking 20% of their budget. I'm anxious to see that in writing to get that into their policy. So, so yeah, I think this is a great idea for EDC funding. So I'm going to leave it at that.
Questions, comments?
Just one last comment. I think the, the key thing here, and this is based off the previous studies we did in the Old Town site, and we did the Old Town site study and then the Grand Avenue study, is that we have some realistic implementation goals, things that, that are achievable, that do meet the goals of where we're going. So that we, we're doing something that, that, that is something we can move forward with. So that's, that's key from our perspective. And we want to make sure we do that as we move forward with it. So it sounds like we'll, we'll put this together and get a number for you moving forward on this.
Deal. All right.
Key additional supplementals to consider for fiscal year 24 include our police radio replacements. It's 1.7 million for a complete replacement or 410,000 for a five-year lease purchase agreement cycle. Our Unified Development Code update, which was removed from the fiscal year 23 budget for 300,000. Our incident management certification pay to provide incentive for staff to get their certifications so we can fill out and maintain a full incident management team is estimated to cost 126,000 at the high end. Increasing certification pay for our civil service officers is estimated to cost an additional 60,000. And then a fire department overtime and staffing optimization.
Oh, real quick, Rachel. Member Kate had a quick question.
Rachel, on that, on the police radio replacements, how, how, what is their life expectancy, if you will?
So we recently discussed it and I think eight to 10 years?
That's generally up to the Motorola. They, they just let us know about a year and a half ago this was happening. So.
How old are the ones?
How long have we had these radios, Chad? Do you remember? Yeah, so made to 10 years, so.
How old are the ones we have currently? Eight years?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Chief.
Good question.
Thank you, Rachel.
This is something I wanted to potentially add. I'd mentioned this kind of in passing previously, but it is something that has come up again. And so if there's anybody else up here who would like to see this, just to kind of get an estimate of a cost of what it would be to add body cameras to our other staff that interface with, like permits, inspections, things like that, just to see if that's something.
So we did, this past year, we did add that for all code enforcement? So you're talking about beyond that?
Yeah, like even inspections, stuff like that. I don't, just to, I think it'd be good to have that record. I know we've had some people say, oh, you know, substance and touch came out and said this, and then they came back and said something different. And just being able to, you know, go back and put our finger on something and say that maybe was or was not the case, I think would be a positive thing. But again, I'd like to see what that cost is first.
I have another question. What would be the benefit of buying the, the police radios if their life expectancy is only eight years at that price? Their, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm really curious.
That's just the total cost to replace all of the radios that we currently have in stock. Whereas if we do the lease purchase agreement, we have to pay interest on it. There's, it ends up being more money over the lifespan.
That's what I needed to hear. Thank you so much.
I'd just point out that there wasn't anybody a fan of adding cameras. That, that's a stretch. I mean, I, I get PD, that's life and death. I don't feel that same way on inspectors.
Well, I've had multiple business owners ask about it. So, I mean.
I think, you know, we move forward with that with code enforcement because they, they are in people's homes, they are in places where, you know, they're, they're, they could be, their safety could be compromised, you know. So we, we can, I, I think we need to make that evaluation of whether there's other folks that need that as well. We can look at the cost.
Member Hernandez, I, I think there's a lot of merit. So you want everyday staff to wear this or just particular staff?
No, not everyday staff. These are just situations where, you know, if it's, we've had, and I'm sure staff is aware, we get people in development that may come up and say, hey, you know, I've been the, working towards something. All of a sudden your city staff comes in and tells me I got to stop everything. It's just, you know, it just kind of helps to, to go back and, and.
I do think Ms. Nancy may need a camera or two. She talks about these water bills here in the future. So I think if we can make a carve out for utility billing, that might help us.
Well, what, what's interesting on that, most, I would say 99.9% of those interactions are over the phone, which are 100% recorded. So when that comes up, we're able to actually send that recording to that homeowner and say, here was your recording.
Correct. And it's been very helpful. Yes. Very, very helpful.
But yeah. Member Coza, were you, okay. Next.
So I think we did get the input we needed on all this. This is just a recap. If, if we needed to recap anything, but I think we're, we're in a good place with the discussion. So appreciate that.
So looking ahead, we asked our departments to update their staffing outlook for the next three years. And based off of that, we have requests for 44.5 FTEs in fiscal year 24. And you can see the future years outlined there. Looking beyond fiscal year 24, we have some additional operating costs such as Fire Station 7, which will, should be operational in FY '24 if the bond passes. So that'll include building operational costs, including equipment and personnel into the budget. And continuing the heavy apparatus replacement program is that will bring additional apparatus into service. Our IT strategic plan, which has a staffing component and a software replacement component, including the OSSI replacement, as well as other staffing studies, which are currently being undertaken for our facilities, department, finance, and HR.
So I believe that concludes everything we have. Obviously, we still have to evaluate all these things we talked about tonight as we move forward to prioritize those, see what we can and cannot fund as we move forward into FY '24. So, you know, these were the things based on the milestones tonight. We'll see some other supplementals as we move forward. We work through the supplementals and the, and the, and the personnel requests submitted by the, the departments. We'll work through the prioritization and recommendations on those as we put the budget together. But just want to see if there's anything else, any other priorities that, that we didn't hit on that we want to make sure we are thinking about as we move into, further into the FY '24 budget process. And again, I want to thank our budget staff, Rachel and Amy and Kendra and their team, as well as everybody throughout the city that worked on the, the budget over the last couple of months to get that all turned in. So appreciate all that hard work. It's a, it's a very, very busy time of year for everybody to do what they, they do on a day-to-day basis, plus put the effort and time into the budget and be thoughtful about what we need. And, and everybody was very thoughtful this year, I believe, based on everyone understanding our, our challenges with the FY '24 budget as we move forward. So appreciate all of our staff thinking about it in that light as well. So appreciate, um, all of our staff, uh, thinking about it in that light as well. So back to you, Mayor, any other final comments or questions or requests for information?
Could you go back two slides? That's a huge number down the bottom. Besides just throwing it up there, what, that, there's no way, no way we're going to fund, fund that. What, I guess, give me some more color for what, what you expect to get out of this slide.
So I think it's just, um, I, I think every year as we go through the budget, you know, we've got a staffing recommendation and there's all, there usually is a question, well, what did they ask for? So we want to make sure everybody sees, uh, what, what the, the, the needs are and what the ask is as we move into this. Then obviously, um, you know, we're going to be in a tight budget. So we're going to have to go through prioritizing what, what we can and can't do. And, and, you know, arrive at, at something that, uh, that, that makes sense for, for next year's budget. But, you know, we always want to understand what, what the needs are, um, moving forward.
I, I appreciate that and I, I would, I would agree with these needs and, um, and again, going back to that whole community stuff, these, these needs are much more important in the list of priorities in my mind than a, uh, a festival or, or something. I don't know. We gotta get public safety shirt up.
Just want to get the request, uh, can we get a memo? I know you asked for additional request for information on, uh, the track and the range and what the progress is on that. I know that there was some site issues. We'd just like to add that on the tally as we go forward. Thank you.
Sure. So we're, we're working on putting together the next iteration of that. And it, it'd probably be several more weeks before we get that put together. But we'll, we'll definitely circle back around when we have that information. We've had two, three meetings on that over the last couple, three weeks. So we're making progress.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions, comments?
Say, thank y'all for, um, for this presentation. It was, uh, the first part where it was so informational and educational was really helpful. You know, I'm a teacher by day and I really did enjoy that. Thank you.
Deal. Uh, I would like to update, uh, both members of staff as well as any public that are watching. We, uh, through Representative Thompson, this is all budget related and, and early input budget. Through Representative Thompson, we filed a bill, uh, back in February, or he filed a bill back in February on our tax calculation worksheet issues. And specifically it was House Bill, uh, 2714. And, uh, what it does is it clarifies if and when you have a mistake that gets made to your, to your calculation worksheet. It, it gives you a, um, clarity as to how, what and where you go fix it. Rather than the ambiguity that we had and walked through while we felt like we were on good legal footing to get a corrected worksheet, there was differences of legal opinions. And so the bill actually, uh, says this is what you do. So it clears, it clarifies it. We had our, uh, hearing in the Ways and Means Committee this morning. Uh, I testified on that, both Trent and Darren both accompanied me in, in Austin to be there for support if I had real technical questions that I could turn to them. But we had a very, I, I thought the questions were good. I thought they were insightful. Probably questions we need to be ready for when it moves over to the Senate. The good news is Representative Thompson has reached out and said that he has spoken with members of the Ways and Means and doesn't have any opposition trying to move it forward. He's going to try to get it on a local consent and move it forward. So, uh, we're hoping, fingers crossed, that'll do it. We have corrected our worksheet and that's the worksheet that we're going to go moving forward. What it actually does for us is it takes away any, any challenge to us using that moving forward. For us specifically here, it would, it would reduce the, the threat, if anything, to challenge on using that corrected worksheet. So, uh, anyway, uh, we, we, it's been a while since we've talked about the, the corrected worksheet and the, and the, uh, the incident that happened. And I just wanted to again, give the public as well as our staff, uh, up to date information on where and what is going on with that. So with that, uh, we will conclude this, uh, this workshop at, what was it? Eight, uh, 6:08.